I will now call the December 17th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. Before we stand and do the pledge and then have a moment of silence, there are a couple of announcements I need to make. Number one, I'm not wearing these glasses because I'm cool. Although if you want to think I'm cool, that's fine, too. I'm wearing them because I have a little eye problem and the light is very sensitive The second thing is, is tonight we'll start a new chapter in how we conduct meetings here at the City Council as defined in the Charter. This practice has not been done according to the Charter for many, 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 many years. As Cheryl went back and looked, the way we conduct it is the most efficient way to do it. But to follow the Charter, I will be roll calling everything except adjournment, which is not the way to do it. I've been involved in this business for 40 years and have chaired many organizations and we just, that's just not how you do it. You do it on final passage, so we will bring it, be bringing forth legislation or an ordinance to put that on the ballot. Anyway, that being said, let us stand. We are going to have a moment of silence. Then I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch it later on YouTube to tonight's City Council. Next, we have the consent agenda. Unless their items need to be pulled, we will accept the motion for approval.
Sir, move.
Sir, second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill number 4623.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number 4623, an ordinance approving a contract for legal services with Robert K. McDonald.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Second reading of Bill number 4623, an ordinance approving a contract for legal services with Robert K. McDonald.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4783.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill number 4624.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4624, an ordinance approving final plat for Casey Bobcat.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second.
Okay, we've got a second and a discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill number 4624, an ordinance approving final plat for Casey Bobcat.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4784.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill number 4625.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4625, an ordinance approving conveyance of a stormwater detention easement and cross-access easement from Allen and Barbara Swearengen for Casey Bobcat.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill number 4625, an ordinance approving conveyance of a stormwater detention easement and cross-access easement from Allen and Barbara Swearengen for Casey Bobcat.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4785.
Next, we're going to have a presentation about a Charter Review Commission, and I know that there are a number of the members in the audience tonight. We want to personally thank you on behalf of the City Council. We gave you a task to do in a short period of time, not your normal time for doing a review. You all got it done in a timely fashion, and we just want to thank you for that. For those, all the members of the commission stand so we can just recognize who you are. Again, thank you for being here. Now, we will turn it over to the co-chairs, Brian Pratt and Jeannie Lauer. Welcome.
Thank you very much. We have a nice slide deck for you that I know you have. This is the Charter history on your first page. I know all of you are familiar generally with the Charter history, so I'm going to move forward. The next thing I want to do is I want to personally thank the mayor and the members of the council for the opportunity to serve our city as a co-chair of this year's Charter Review Commission, along with my co-chair, Jeannie Lauer. You couldn't have selected a better person to serve as the co-chair. Also, I also want to say, you selected eight amazing people whose names are up there on the board to serve as your Charter Review Commission. And I can tell you this, at every single one of those meetings, the men and women who were on your Charter Review Commission came in without an agenda, worked at least two hours for, at every meeting, and diligently went through page by page of the Charter. And I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, your recognition of the members of the commission and as your co-chairs as well. I'd also like to recognize, we stand on their shoulders today, and I really appreciate the opportunity and the people that you selected. So, thank you for that very much. And it's also, should be said, too, that there were three City Council members that were at every single Charter Review Commission meeting as well. Councilman Carter, Councilman Culpepper, and Councilman Kayler as well. And they were there not to provide us and tell us what we should do, but to provide to answer questions we had, and I'm very grateful for the fact that they showed up and were helpful. In addition to that, you have some amazing folks in the city that helped out, and first and foremost, Cheryl Morgan, your city clerk, was instrumental in both organizing the process and providing the structure that we worked under. And so, I know Jeannie and I are very grateful to Cheryl for her help. Christine Kate's over here, again, who's a, this isn't her first Charter Review Commission, and she also did a great job, too. And Jackie Summer also, who spent her nights as well, and I'm very grateful for her legal leadership during the process as well. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the great support you gave to the commission. We'll move ahead now to what we did. We first met on July 19th, and the members of the commission selected Jeannie and I as chairs of this. We then met five additional times and went through section by section of the Charter, line by line, bless you, of the Charter, and went through different things of what we've talked about, went through different amendments, and again invited the public to speak as well, and entertained a lot of dialogue as to how our government's run. And, Mr. Mayor, to you and the council, I want to tell you, the overwhelming thought is, is that you're doing a great job, and that there were no dramatic changes on how we can do things, and that's a testament to you, Mr. Mayor, and also the council, over the past several years, for not giving us and the public some great change that we wanted to make, or that we needed to make to the Charter. So, that was the thought, is what can we do that we would look past, not only the great work you all have done, but think about other administrations in the future on what we can do to guide the Charter into the future. So, with that, we have some changes, and we have some recommendations. We're here to do two things tonight. One, we're submitting a unanimous recommendation on behalf of your Charter Review Commission on potential changes to the Blue Springs Charter. Second, some thoughts, thoughts that were brought up during the Charter Review Commission that we did not make changes on, and that the council can take up if they so choose or if they don't choose, but just some thoughts that, that were addressed at different, different portions of the different meetings as well. We'll do that at the end, but it's important for me to note that your Charter Review Commission voted unanimously to make these changes. So, I'll turn it over to Jeannie.
Thank you, Brian. And two, I, I agree with Brian's thoughts and compliments to everyone who was participating in this entire process. So, here are the global changes that are made, and after I go through this page, and Brian is going to go through each of the articles that have substantive changes and explain what they are and a bit about the comparison of where they were. And so, the first thing that we noticed in going through the entire Charter was it tended to refer to council man, or him, or his, or he, and we made those more gender-neutral terms throughout. The second part is to change the age of qualifying to serve as a council member to the age of 25. And the reason for that, and for the city administrator, is that currently the mayor has to be age 25 to qualify as mayor. Should there be a position open as mayor during that term, we would have no one to fill that spot, because the age of 21, and if no one has reached that age of 25, we could potentially be in a situation where we would have no mayor. And the second, and that's in Article III, and the second part of that is that we added that any individual who wanted to be mayor or on the council would be disqualified if indeed they were a registered sex offender. And then the last one has to do with mayoral appointments and having to make those with the advice and consent of the majority of the City Council. And this is really clarification since the last time the Charter was written, because of the mayor now being a voting member of the council. And so, the language was clarified to show that it would need a majority of the entire City Council and could be removed by the mayor with the majority of the entire City Council, or five-sevenths majority of the City Council. So, again, it's really only required because of the, the nature of having the mayor as a voter on the council. So, with that, now we will go through each of the articles.
We'll start with some changes made to Article III, and I know the members of the council are aware of Article III. That's the City Council provision of our Charter. On Section 3.10, filling of council vacancies, here's what we did in a nutshell with the language, is that if a member of the council would no longer become a member of the council due to a death or disability, the mayor then gets to appoint someone from the public to serve in that City Council spot, and that, and that process then, then that person would then sit in your shoes. What we did is that we had that person, it was, it's an appointee, serve for election at the next opportunity to fill out the remainder of that term. So, now it was a little bit unclear, and we debated whether or not that appointee would fill the full unexpired term, and we thought we would rather have the citizens of Blue Springs choose who sits on the council at the earliest opportunity. So, that was the change of 3.10. 3.11 is qualifications, and what we did here is, is it's a clarification. Right now, if there's a forfeiture of office, there, you can get a hearing, quote, "on demand," and we said that just within 30 days, just to make it more clear, unclear what "on demand" really meant. Could they walk into a council meeting and demand a hearing right there? So, that was, that's that provision. We'll move ahead to 3.12G. What we did on the Charter is also look for opportunities to clean the Charter, if there were redundant provisions in the Charter, to take out the redundancies, and this is one of those examples. So, we're deleting this section. This is not a substantive change. It's just a duplication of what's in a later section of the Charter. So, there is no substantive change with respect to this deletion of the Charter. Next is the section 3.16. This is a municipal judge section, and here's what we did with this, is that right now our Charter conflicts with state law, and that was a state law passed, I think, two years ago when they did the entire change to our municipal statutes. And in here, under our current Charter, the mayor has the authority then to request someone to, if there's a vacancy in the municipal court, to make that change, and the state law then requires the presiding judge of the, and here in Jackson, it's the 16th Judicial Circuit, to then appoint someone for that. So, it takes it away. This changes it from the mayor over to the presiding judge of the circuit court, and state law requires that anyway. So, it makes, what we did here is, we just conform state law to our Charter, which does make a substantive change to the Charter, because it changes the ability for the mayor to appoint that, that judge, that temporary judge. The next section, Article 3.19. Again, this is an opportunity for us to delete a redundancy. This is a, this is something from the 1994 Charter when it was initially passed, that said within one year they'd codify the statute, so we just deleted that out. So, there was no substantive change with 3.19. It's just a delete out of section that was really only applicable after the 1994 Charter was adopted by the city. The next set is, now I'm moving on to Article V, and Article V is the city administrator section. And the city administrator change here, what happens, Section 5.3 addresses when the city administrator is temporarily absent, either due to some absence or due to a disability. In that case, the city administrator sends a letter to the city clerk designating somebody to take over those duties in, during that absence. And then, under the current Charter, the City Council approves that. And then, under the current Charter, the City Council can revoke it as well, but it was unclear what the vote had to be. So, we made it by majority vote. So, a majority vote to let that person in, and a majority vote to take that person out is, is what, what we do. So, this was just something we wanted to clarify what it was. We think if push comes to shove, we think this is what the City Council would probably do anyway. So, we just, so that was the, the one change here. We just said by a majority vote, we added language in there to revoke the, the stand-in city administrator, if you will, for lack of a better language. The next section is municipal elections. This is under Article VIII, nomination and elections. And under Article VIII, this just again conforms to state law. You can't have an election on the first Tuesday. It has to be the first Tuesday after the first Monday. So, we just made our Charter reflect what current state law requires anyway, and that's all this does. So, no substantive change was made in this section right here. The next section, and really I'm going to go forward one more slide. The next section does change how we place candidates for mayor and city council on the ballots. And really, what we did here is, and, and Mr. Mayor, you're going to be probably most familiar with this, and Jeannie and I are familiar with this, too. We simply adopted really what the Secretary of State requires candidates running for statewide office to do for the city of Blue Springs. So, here's what it is. You walk in, if you want to, if you want to file for election, on the first day you file, no matter when you go in on that first day, you draw a number out of a bucket, barrel, hat, or something that the city clerk would administer, and whoever has the lowest number on that day, so there are four people filing for, for District 1 or District 3, then whoever draws the lowest number on that day will get the top ballot placement. After that first day, it's first come, first served. And what we're really trying to stop here is tent city in front of City Hall, of having a bunch of candidates camp out outside to spend all night or shoot all week, trying to get that first placement on the ballot. We think this is a fairer process. Anyone can come in that first day and gets an equal opportunity to be placed at the top of the ballot. And so, that's what this section is, that's what this section, the change here was designed to do, is to help make that process fairer for, fairer for folks. And for someone like the mayor and Jeannie and I, we're very familiar with this process, and we hope that it cleans up and makes it a fairer process. The next section is political activity, and this is my second run at deleting this run. Last time, this failed the ballot, and probably due to my inability to communicate really what this means. I think this deletes the first sentence in, in Section 12.2. I think it's probably unconstitutional. Our city employees are the only folks prohibited from participating in any election process anywhere in the state of Missouri that I'm aware of. And really, all this does is, it allows a city employee to put a yard sign in his or her yard, or make a contribution to a campaign, but absolutely, the rest of Section 12.2 says it absolutely prohibits. You can't electioneer while you're at work, and you can't get some favorable benefit, an employment benefit, by doing campaign contributions or by doing any political activity. So, it keeps that completely out of the workplace, and that's, and that's exactly what we want to have happen. No one should be doing any campaigning, and no one should be hired on the basis of, of what they did during the campaign. But it does allow someone who worked for the city to put a yard sign in their yard. And it does allow someone, if they want to give 10 bucks to a candidate of their choice, it does give them the ability to do that, and we think that's only fair. Every state employee gets to do that. Every federal employee gets to do that, and every other city employee around this area gets to do that as well. So, we just think it's just a matter of fairness, and so, there's another run at that. The other change on this is in Section 12.4, and what we did here is, it said, the current Charter says, "Any person who by himself or herself or others willfully violates," we just thought that was a little unclear, so we just put, "Any person who violates the sections are in violation of this." We think it provides clarity to what was already, what should have been more clear. So, no substantive change was done with that. We just think it provided some better clarity to it. And now, we'll turn it back over to Jeannie.
Okay, thank you. Article 14 was put in the Charter in 1994 as a result of actually having the Charter in 1994, which then put forth the schedule of how this whole thing would, would progress as far as putting the ballot initiative together and the election time and so forth. Since that's already been done and checked off the list, this whole section is no longer applicable, so we recommend that this be deleted and as a ballot initiative taken out of the Charter.
Oh, Jeannie's still up.
All right. So, that wraps up the actual changes within the Charter that the commission is bringing to the City Council this evening. There were other things, as Brian said, that were discussed during these meetings that were, we felt were important, but not necessarily within the scope of the Charter itself. And so, these we have just listed for your consideration, for you to do as you so choose. So, the first one has to do with the annual participation of performance reviews of the city manager, city attorney. And again, this is just to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing, and along with that, then, to make sure that the organizational chart, while it is very traditional in nature, it looks good on paper, but it doesn't necessarily reflect the functionality of how things, reporting structures and so forth, as far as direct lines and potentially indirect lines, as to who reports to who. So, that was the first consideration. The second one was to extend the terms of council and mayor for four-year terms, and the thought about that was that there could potentially be savings in doing it, monetary savings for that particular revision. The next one was the approving an ordinance outlining the structure and appointments, and this came to be because of, as an example, our commission being put together, just making sure, again, it's very clear as to where the commission members would be drawn from, if there was a certain number from each district, if there were going to be any at large, if the council members recommended them, if the mayor recommended them, just that whole process. So, that's something that should probably be discussed among your group and, and determined just for clarity. The next item has to do with 110 of the code in the Charter regarding public comments prior to council vote. Again, there was just discussion as to whether it was allowed or not allowed, or how it was handled. And then, the following one was considering the city's discrimination policy, and this was from a public comment that was brought to the commission, and the extension of the discrimination policy to potentially include sexual choice and gender preference and so forth. The commission discussed this, and we did have a member of the Human Relations Commission on the Charter Commission, and it was discussed as to role, the role that group played in conjunction with the council and with the Charter Commission, and it was felt that proper practice would be, that it would be something initiated by the council and the mayor, and then you determine what route you might want to take with that, if you would like to go to the Human Relations Commission with that, or if that's something you wanted to do on your own. But again, that was something we felt was outside of the scope of the Charter.
And the last one, I think, makes merit some sense, too. We'd asked that the council instruct the clerk to add a section in the Charter book itself to say that any conflicts with, where the Charter's in conflict with state statute, that state statute prevails. And the reason we do that is, I think people from the general public would rely on what's in our Charter, and they may not be able to do that if state law contradicts that. So, it just may, I think a nice statement in there, a little statement at the front, may provide some clarity to the process. And for all these council consideration issues, Jeannie and I do not have the authority to offer an opinion on behalf of the Charter Review Commission, so we leave all of that to you all. We don't offer an opinion as to the province of any of the issues on the board, or whether to take up those at any point in time. And finally, next steps. And, and Mr. Mayor, I know you're very familiar with this process, and we ask, we humbly ask the City Council to accept our unanimous recommendations to change the Charter, and we are committed to helping educate the public as well on the province of these Charter Review changes. And we believe that if the council and the general public approve these Charter changes, we think we're going to have a better Charter, and we think by virtue of that, may be a better city as well. Again, thank you all very much for the presentation and allowing us an opportunity to come before you, and again, thank you to the members of the Charter Review Commission as we stand on their shoulders as well, and I guess we're happy to take any criticism, questions, or whatever.
Well, I think you did a marvelous job. Thank, thank all of you for that. I think it's sensible, and hopefully the citizens of this community will also agree. Anyone else?
Yes, I would just like to say, I'm, I had the privilege of being able to attend these meetings. What impressed me the most was the thought and efforts put in by all the members of this commission. It wasn't just, oh, yeah, let's do this. It was, let's talk about it. There wasn't anything that was decided that didn't entail a great deal of conversation, looking at historically what had gone on, and so, I commend the commission. I think you all did a marvelous job, and I appreciate all the time put in. It's not an easy job, so I, I say thank you very much.
Anyone else? Don, Carter?
I also have a great appreciation for what you did. I mean, it was just a phenomenal group and the great discussion, and along with Susan and Jerry, I was at all of the meetings as well. Just a fantastic job, and I think there are some great changes here. I did have one question. 3.10, filling of council vacancies, does that fall under the umbrella of all mayoral appointments with advice and consent of the council? I don't have a copy of the Charter with me. Failure on my part.
Yes. Yeah, the current Charter, are you, the current Charter requires that the, that the council confirms.
Okay.
And there was no change of that.
Yes, thanks.
And I think, actually, the last time that happened, a member of the commission, I think Tracy Bye was the last member appointed. Now, I'm wrong, sorry.
We had Jim May. Yeah, Jim May was the last one.
Oh, yeah, May, yeah.
Anyone else? Again, thank you for your hard work, and again, our hats off, and appreciation to all the members that served on it. You did a yeoman's job.
Yes.
So, just some clarification and direction to staff. They've made their unanimous recommendations, which did not include the item that you wanted to see, brought forward. And so, we're going to be preparing an ordinance. Jackie's going to be writing that to bring forward to you at the first meeting in January. We want to make certain we get that ordinance, that bill, right? And so, is it the consent and direction of the council to include the recommendation that you're asking for, seeking regarding the way, the process of the meetings?
Do we need some sort of a motion on that?
Do we, do we, do we need a motion? Just say without objection, and you're prepared.
It'll be on the January 7th agenda, so it'll be voted on then.
Wouldn't that just be an amendment we would make to have that?
Okay, so we will do that on the 7th. We don't need to do it tonight.
Right. So what I'm asking, what I'm asking, what I'm asking for is do you want us to include it in the bill? Or do you, does somebody want to offer an amendment at the meeting?
Jackie is, I think we're relying on Jackie. You're saying we just do that. You prepare it, and we offer it at the January 7th meeting.
You can instruct me to do that now.
We can include it.
We can include it now.
You can instruct me to include it on the.
Okay, do we need to do that by vote?
Would you please?
Okay.
Clarification, Your Honor. Is that a charter amendment we're voting on or an ordinance we're voting on?
This has to be, because it's presently in the charter. It needs to be a charter amendment.
I would make that motion, Your Honor.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. And we're going to roll call it.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carrie Jeanne Annesley.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. So did that clear everything up for everybody? Okay. During the mayor's announcement, we're going to defer to you first.
Yes, sir, Your Honor. I know you have some very important things to do here, but I just wanted to call attention to the fact that we had a couple of council celebrities who had birthdays this past Saturday and Sunday. And Your Honor celebrated his birthday on Saturday and Councilman Culpepper on Sunday. So they were back to back, and we just want to congratulate and thank you and wish you well for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'm not one to not share my age. I was 39 plus shipping and handling.
Is that Amazon Prime?
Okay, we have a presentation that we need to make. Where do you want to make this, Sheriff? Is it right here? You want to go down there?
Right there. We can take the pictures.
Okay. We have a couple of council members that have reached that milestone in their service to the city of Blue Springs, and this time I'd like to provide them with their service pins. First, we have Mayor Pro Jim and council member, because that's going to be approved. Gender neutral.
You ever give a council member, you send a council man every seven hours.
After the charter change, you will be a member, but I'm going to get a jumpstart on it. Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Susan Culpepper has served five years, and this is her five year pin. And I'm just going to give it to you and let you pin it on whenever you feel the need. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, we're switching places here. In 2008, you and I came on together.
Yes, we did.
I received my pin a little bit sooner because I'd already had previous service.
A little bit of previous service, not as much as you.
Yeah. But anyway, this is your 10-year pin that we're going to be presenting to you tonight. And you've served us well over those years, and we just want to show appreciation. And this is something, I wear mine a lot, so you can wear this very proudly because you are wearing something that represents the city, that's on the move and on the right track.
That's true.
Congratulations. Do you want to say something?
We appreciate all you coming tonight. This is important.
All right, thanks.
Your Honor, we can also recognize Susan Culpepper for her 20 years on the Planning Commission.
Yeah, 21.
21 years. Thank you for that service, yes.
Yeah, I was just right for the high school.
Before we meet again, it will be Christmas. And so we want all of you to have a good Christmas holiday and a exciting, prosperous New Year, because all those will take place before we meet again. I am going to go to Thostapunda. Tonight, it comes from Albert Einstein, and I quote, "If you can't explain it simply, you don't understand it well enough," end quote. We do have one visitor's appearance form, and that's from Scott Casey. Do you want to come up and address the council?
Thank you, Your Honor and members of the council. I also had the privilege of attending the Charter Commission meetings as a, as a guest, and I want to echo the thanks to them for all the hard work that they did on that. I had, I had made the, the public request, as the co-chairs described, regarding adding additional protections to our anti-discrimination policy. And unfortunately, the charter did not elect to recommend that change to you today. But we did have a really constructive dialogue during that process, and I, I came here tonight to kind of hopefully continue that momentum and keep things going forward so this issue doesn't just die tonight. So to date, we've got 15 cities in Missouri that have adopted a comprehensive nondiscrimination ordinance. The most recent one was St. Joseph, Missouri. They just passed one in September after a lengthy period of public input where small business owners got to put, got to give input, the school districts did, residents did, of course. And the, the final result of that was a really strong ordinance that I feel like is going to be a big benefit to St. Joseph. On the Kansas side of the metro, we had Mission, Kansas, as well as Prairie Village just passed similar ordinances. So this is something that cities are looking at more and more. And my hope is that Blue Springs would elect to be the 16th city in Missouri to pass a comprehensive nondiscrimination ordinance like this. So my, my request to you tonight is to take a look at the St. Joseph ordinance that they just passed. I think it would be a good template for Blue Springs. I think it would have support in the community. And in addition to that, I think it would be a good idea for us to take a look at the Municipal Equality Index. This is something that I talked about at the charter, the charter meetings, but essentially it is a report that's issued annually by a group called the Human Rights Campaign, which is a prominent national group that deals with equality. And this report specifically scores, they've scored hundreds of cities at this point, and they add more to their report every year. And it goes through their criteria for, for having the best possible equality for a local government such as ours. So I think if the city would take a look at that report and consider either joining it or electing to self-score, which is something the Human Rights Campaign will assist cities with if they're interested in doing it, I think what that would do is get kind of everybody on the same page in terms of what the national standards are and, you know, where, where we're doing a good job with regards to equality and where maybe we could do some improvements. So, you know, those are kind of my two requests to kind of keep this moving forward. I'd definitely be interested in hearing your thoughts on that.
Thank you. Don't see any questions, so thank you for your presentation.
Okay. Next, we have, we're going to be going into executive session. So if our city attorney will read the description and somebody will so move it, second it, and we will roll call it.
Your Honor, at this time, a motion would be in order for this public body to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610-021 Subparagraph 1, Revised Statutes of Missouri for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel relating to litigation, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.